Okay, good afternoon. It's March 1st, it's 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and I will now call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Can I ask the Chair if, or I need to ask if the staff confirmation of the Open Kansas, or Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice of today's meeting was provided.
Thank you. Need a roll call.
I will now call the roll. Commissioner Gilmore.
I'm here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Bernhardt.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
And Commissioner Barber.
Here.
And Chair Hay.
Here.
So we have, at this time, eight appointed members, and with Mr. Gilmore joining us by Zoom, we have full attendance, and we have a quorum to proceed with today's meeting.
Thank you, Dean. We'll go down to the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 16th meeting. Second.
Okay, that'd be the February 15th meeting?
Fifteenth, sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That carries, what would be, two, eight? Eight to zero.
To zero.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
In the way of new business, we have two public hearing items scheduled for this afternoon. The first item is item 3.1, and that is a continuation of a hearing on application P 22-1. That's been filed by Building Kansas LLC, and their application was requesting approval of a preliminary plat of a proposed 169-lot subdivision of a 53.26-acre tract. This is located at the north end of Foxborough Drive, east of Centennial Road, and the proposed subdivision name is the Aeroplanes Edition. So this was on your agenda at your February 15th meeting, and the application is to take a piece of property that's bordered by unplanted agricultural land outside the city limits on the north and on the east, shilling subdivision number five on the west, and what's known as College Park Plan Development District, a residential development that was former Air Force Base housing on the south. West Dry Creek forms the boundary of the property on the east. There's a flood control levee that forms the boundary on the south, and then there's an unnamed drainage channel that runs along the west side of the property. Just for getting our bearings, this property is 1,600 feet north of Shilling Road, and it's 220 feet east of Centennial Road. Along with this application, there was a petition filed by the property owners for annexation into the city, and the City Commission approved an ordinance annexing this property at their February 14th meeting. The plan is to subdivide this into 169 residential building lots for future town home development, which would be access from a network of internal streets. We're still doing some work on the final preliminary plat layout. It's possible that the number of lots could change because this property is impacted by a number of existing easements and utility lines. As far as your prior action, you had a public hearing on this item at your last meeting, February 15th. You voted for to one to recommend approval of the applicant's request for R2 zoning subject to satisfactory plating of this 53-acre site. You then made a second recommendation that consideration of this item be postponed to your next available meeting, or March 1st. So we're taking this up on a continuation from your previous meeting, and in terms of the design of this property, we noted previously that it's essentially a landlocked property with no frontage on or access to any perimeter street. It has historically been farm ground, and so to address this, a access was obtained across a vacant tract of land owned by the Slyna Airport Authority to provide a street connection to Centennial Road. And then to provide a second means of emergency access, the developers are proposing to construct an emergency access road from the north end of Foxborough Drive across the levee and into the subdivision. In addition, there will be platted street connections that would allow for future street connections to be made either to an extension of Virginia Drive to the east or across the property to the north to connect to proposed, to Magnolia Road in the future. So Mr. Hirsch has a map up in that we may need to zoom in on to see a little more clearly, but this is the property in question, the subdivision layout. They have platted a street through connection here that could be connected to in the future that could provide direct access to Magnolia Road. In the northeast corner, there's the possibility for extending this over to a future extension of Virginia Drive, which at some point will go all the way through down to this section of Virginia Drive. And then there's the third possibility of bringing a road up and having a second connection to Centennial Road. Those would occur in a future phase. The city fire marshal has conducted an onsite inspection and has determined that flood control levee that's at the south edge of this property is low enough that there is sufficient clearance to get fire apparatus road across the levee and into the subdivision. This access road is 610 feet east of the proposed Centennial Road entrance to the subdivision. We do have Fire Marshal Troy Long here today if you have follow-up questions about access or emergency access. We had a meeting with the applicants yesterday and went over and covered a lot of ground about some of these issues that need to be pinned down. We have now received an updated traffic impact study that we'll be analyzing in the coming week and will be able to report on. We have a, we're going to modify the street plan so that this provides a potential future connection that would provide another access option. There are a few things to work out with the Director of Utilities as far as sewer profiles, and we're still trying to pin down final dimensions of a, there's a high-pressure gas line that comes along the west side of Foxborough Drive and comes up through this property and would be in residential backyards, and we're trying to pin down the final dimensions on that before we would bring the plat back to you for action. But based on our meeting yesterday, our recommendation would be to postpone consideration of this to your March 15th meeting, and as we noticed in our, in our staff report, it would be important that when you do make a motion, or if you do make a motion to postpone this, that you be sure to cite the date and time of that future meeting for anybody that might be watching this meeting at home, so they know exactly the date and time that you would be continuing this to. So I guess in the order of things, we would stand for any questions that you have for staff, planning staff. Then we would ask Mr. Mark, the Fire Marshal Long, to come to the podium and speak to emergency access and address any questions you have. And then we do understand that we have a member of the public in the audience that would like to ask questions about this. And then, of course, we have the applicant's representatives. So with that, we'll start by seeing if you have any questions for Dustin or myself, and if not, we'll hear from Mr. Long.
Okay. We have any questions for staff on this?
I have one question. The road leading out to Magnolia, what are the chances of that being there in the future, being that that's all in floodplain right now?
Well, the, we actually have, if you look at a floodplain map for southeast Slyna, we have a number of residential subdivisions that have shallow floodplain, and there's a provision for being able to get letters of map amendment or map adjustment based on more detailed survey information. So while the floodplain is relatively extensive, it's really very shallow, and almost all the subdivisions that we have that are along South Ohio and east of South Ohio were in the floodplain at one time, but there are things that you can do in terms of grading and adjusting to get properties removed from the floodplain. So, for example, Stone Lake, Eastview Estates, Golden Eagle Estates, Wildcat Circle, all of those areas were in a mapped floodplain at one time but have been removed based on grading and different modifications that the developers made. So that, that is not, it makes it a little more challenging, but it's...
It is possible though.
It is possible. As to the timing, we have no idea. That property was purchased at an auction by the owner of Vision One that does airplane maintenance and painting, and we don't know if they bought it for future housing for their workers or what their vision is, but when we have a plat that gets approved that has a street connection to it, then we work to make sure that whatever happens on the other side of that results in a connection. This is probably the most realistic and the most likely to happen soonest. This might be the easiest just because we're dealing with the Slyna Airport Authority and a vacant piece of land that's next to a sewer pump station. This is desirable long-term, but it might be the longest in terms of timeframe and taking place.
Okay, thank you. So right now, then, the only road access we got in is the one off of Magnolia?
No, the, the only...
Or Centennial, I'm sorry, Centennial.
The only public street access is here, and then Foxborough Drive comes up here and has a cul-de-sac here, but there's flood control right away, and a emergency access road could be built over the levee and into, I don't know, you may need to zoom in on the plat, Dustin, so we can show where that would come in.
I guess my question, I just wanted to make sure, you know, when you said that we had one way in, we got more than one way out once we get in that way there, so that's...
Yeah, and Mr. Long will get into that in more detail. The other thing, and Dustin, if you could scroll so we could see the top, the north end, what you see here is a phase line, and so their, their plan is to develop in phases, and so the first phase would be to this phase line here. And so this, this roadway and the emergency access are adequate to do Phase 1. When we get to Phase 2, then we're going to be looking for additional points of connection. But we'll have, we'll see if you have any questions about any other matters, and then we can hear from Mr. Long.
I think I'm following up on the same concerns of, we're looking at 169 units here, and I understand in a couple of phases, but access in and out of these properties, we're looking at one, one main entrance and one through another subdivision. Is that adequate? Am I, has there been a traffic study on that?
There, there has been a traffic study that's been submitted. Staff has had some comments on that traffic study, and we now have a revised traffic study that will indicate the number of trips to be generated, but we just wanted to point out, and it's on page 2 of your report, the city subdivision regulations require that subdivisions that abut and have frontage on a direct access perimeter street have at least one public street access point on that direct access perimeter street. So in this case, the direct access perimeter street that's providing access to this subdivision is Centennial Road. Then the subdivision regulations direct the Planning Commission to look at the need for additional emergency access points into the subdivision. In addition to the one direct access point, the subdivision regulations state that a new subdivision shall have any additional means of access in and out of the subdivision either by direct street connection or indirectly to existing streets and adjoining subdivisions as are determined necessary by the Planning Commission. So at your next meeting, we're hopeful that we will have the results of that traffic study, and then you can evaluate that for yourself. But what, what we're trying to say is that while it's 169 lots, there's only about 75 in this first phase, and having this as the sole means in and out with emergency access could conceivably work for that, but it doesn't work if you go farther east and get additional lots. So before anything happens in that Phase 2, we're going to be looking for an additional means of access. But if you go back, Dustin, to your map on the connectivity, Virginia Drive is, is designed to be a collector street, so you're going to have to zoom out a little bit, Dustin. So this street, which runs by Menards, will connect down to Virginia Drive down here where there's a signal at Shilling Road. So this is designed to be a collector street for this area, so this will feed into that, which would provide access both those directions. This property is being viewed for further residential development, which the Planning Commission will see, see additional plans on soon, but this, this will not necessarily be going through the heart of a subdivision because this will be a collector street that'll be on the edge of a neighborhood, not, not in the middle of a neighborhood. So that, that would be the, the primary goal. The, the other option is to have a second connection to Centennial, but that doesn't do much for providing more access to this east side over here.
Okay, that kind of answers my question because now that I see that, when we get Phase 2 in there, we're actually looking at three ways, or we'll be looking at three ways.
Right.
You know, for the, for the...
And so as far as the distances go and the remoteness between the emergency access and the, the street access, that really only works for Phase 1. It doesn't work for development of the entire subdivision or both phases.
Okay.
So I did want to give Mr. Long a chance to address you. He has gone out and steadied the site, and he can report to you what he found in terms of the options for emergency access.
Okay. There's no more questions for staff. We'll ask the Fire Marshal Long if he would please step forward and...
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I prepared an official statement. It's not much different from what Dean had spoken on, but this being a phased development is what changes it quite a bit, as Dean spoke to Phase 1 being 70-some units. So what we're looking at here in the emergency access on Foxborough is what I would consider an interim emergency access. The, the code speaks to all your emergency access, accesses needing to meet D 104.3, which is an appendix in the fire code, and that speaks to remoteness. That remoteness on this property with Phase 1, it's 1,300 feet from our entrance to that end diagonally, and so we need to be 650 feet, basically. As Mr. Andrew said, this is 610 feet, which I think meets the intent of the code to have that secondary access. As Mr. Andrew spoke to the, I don't know what kind of a flood levy it is out there because it's, it might be 12 inches higher at the peak of the levee or the middle of the levee as compared to the street level, so it's not protecting much. I think it's owned by us and not the Corps.
It's a city levy, not a Corps levy, but it is a certified levy.
So I feel like the ability to get a truck up and over that, once they do, would do some work, would be reasonable and feasible. And so, and then understanding, once we move into Phase 2, and I'm not sure how we're going about it, but we've talked about a condition upon starting of Phase 2 of this project, that we would need that secondary access on either Jaeger, isn't it Jaeger? On Jaeger Lane there, which as Mr. Andrew said, is probably the most practical coming in at this time. We would need that tie-in to be there, like Dustin's showing you on the screen there. We would need that tie-in to be there before they could actually begin the construction of Phase 2. And what that does for us then is it takes away the need for any emergency access whatsoever at that point, because now we have two ways in there. If you go to the International Fire Code and read about, so we have a book called The Commentary. Basically, it takes that code and puts it into layman's terms for people who need that like me. But if you go in there and read that, the commentary isn't, I think that's the misconception, and I hope this is an opportunity to educate. The, it's a misconception in that this is worried about having a blocked access and not being able to access housing developments with more than 30 properties, when, when actually the, the commentary speaks to having a place to turn around a fire truck, because we don't like to back fire trucks more than 150 feet. And the commentary speaks specifically to having a turnaround point. The circulation that they've created in this plat, I think, lends well to us being able to get around to all points of this, this property. We've talked about other properties in this situation and, and trying to dream up this big catastrophe that blocks every way into it. And, you know, at the end of the day, I don't know if you guys know many firemen, but we just get stuff done, and if there's something in the way, we're probably going to push it out of the way, or run over it, or go around it, or something. I mean, you know, we, we talk about things being fireman-proof, and there is nothing. I mean, we can buy a metal bar and they still break it. So that, so with that said, I, I think we've got a very good situation here with this interim emergency access coming off of Foxborough and a good access off of Centennial. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
I got just one question. I'm, I'm happy with the rose, the access of the long-term plan, but I was actually just out there, and I would differ with you on that. That dike's actually, I would lean towards five feet, but it may be four. I'd be happy to go shoot it at any time, my laser's always with me. And, and at a 10% grade, that would take us back 40 to 50 feet for a fire truck to get over that.
I don't think we have those pictures with us. I, I took some pictures out there. I should have sent them to Dustin. Yeah, there's not much of a grade at all.
You took an apparatus out there and...
I'm sorry?
You, you took a fire truck out there and drove over...
No, we didn't take a fire, because it's just earth right now, and we wouldn't want to get in trouble for tearing up a dike, but, but I don't think it's five foot. I mean, I'd be happy to get it looked at, but have some picture proof of it, and, but that's not the case. It's not five foot.
Okay, I'll be, I'll take a second look. I don't have the picture with me, but when I was standing next to it, it was well above my chest, so...
At Foxborough?
At the end of Foxborough in the cul-de-sac, about 20 feet off the cul-de-sac.
I think I have a picture on my cell phone. I could look through it and find a picture and show you.
Yeah, we've had, staff's primary experience out there was that we didn't, we had a farmer who liked to take shortcuts off of Foxborough to go into the field over the levee, and some of the tire ruts were damaging the levee, but my recollection is that there was kind of a gradual slope coming from the south, and that the tractor didn't have much difficulty driving over that levee. But there's a cul-de-sac that ends there, and then there's kind of a gradual slope area that goes over to the levee, and then the, the levee sloping on the other side. But I, I don't, I'm not good at estimating heights, but I, I wouldn't have estimated it to be anything like five feet.
I've ridden out there before, and I never saw anything that looked...
But the, the idea is that you would, you would taper the ground, starting at the edge of the cul-de-sac to get it up to the, where you'd cross the levee and then taper it on the other side.
What kind of material would that be?
It would have to be all-weather surface that could support the weight of the fire truck. Mr. Long can give you the specifications, but...
Yeah, it needs to be 20 foot wide and support 75,000 pounds.
It wouldn't be paved, though.
It wouldn't necessarily be paved. In most cases, the emergency access is some form of compacted rock with a stabilized base, but most of our fire access roads are not paved.
And as I said, unfortunately, you use that, you know, rock just keeps going down, and, and so my anticipation is we would get that secondary road in there, up there with Jaeger Lane, and I don't think we would, we would ever use it at that point, once you may had that access. Were you guys able to see that? That, did you go to the Google Map thing again? And it's hard to tell height there, but I don't think it's, I'm, I'm trying to, I got too many grandbaby pictures on my phone to...
More toward that house was...
But I'll, I'll look for it as you guys speak, and, and I can show you. We shot some different pictures of that, so...
So I'm assuming that that emergency access is then going to be a blocked, so it's going to have some type of chain or cable across it, so it's not a used facility like in the other areas.
So we would get, we would get signage at the end of that with, with posts at least 25 foot apart that says, "No parking, fire department access," with a chain and, and our NOX padlock that we use.
And no matter what the grade, I mean, this is nothing that's insurmountable, right?
Well, I mean, if, if we were looking at a dike or a levee that was truly a difference of five foot, it would be difficult, because, you know, we don't want to diminish that and leave homes unprotected.
Right.
And so, you know, if that were the case, the developers may have to pay for some way to, to be able to slope that back away from it, but, yeah, I don't think it's totally insurmountable at all.
Thank you. And then, so, and then can you go back to the phase, or to the plot, to the plating? So can you zoom in on that to where the Phase 1 is? Okay. And so the distance from the entrance off of Centennial to the northeast corner, you said that distance is how far?
1,300.
1,300 feet.
Okay.
And then, so from the, from the... And then, so from the, from that emergency access, it's 610.
So the remoteness requirement is one-half the diagonal distance, so it's one-half the distance of 1,300 feet.
And if you look at that, if it was 40 feet further to the east, it's not going to matter, you know? The intent is, so, I mean, we worry, like I said, we worry about some catastrophe that blocks that. Even if you block the Centennial entrance, this emergency access would work.
Did Commissioner Gilmore have something he wanted to add? Okay, I guess not. Okay, any more questions for Mr. Long? Okay, any more questions for staff? Okay, questions from the public? If you'd like to step forward and give your name and address to the clerk and.
Mike Page. I live at 165 Taylor Court, just south of there. My question is, is, you know, the access you got, you know, I'm not opposed to them building houses or anything else, but you got one end, you know, except the emergency access. I think, you know, in all right, you should have two accesses in there prior to them building. You know, just, that's just common sense, I think, you know, besides one, even though it's 75 houses, you know, it just makes more sense to have two accesses instead of one.
And I think they're, I think they did say that you got one coming in off of.
Right.
And then you got to one through the subdivision, too.
Yeah, but the other access that you have to the north going back over to Centennial, you know, if they have that access too, there's two ways in, no matter what, you know? Instead of just emergency access and coming off Centennial, you know? So that's my thought anyway, is, you know, make sure there's plenty of access to that property before you ever, you know, develop it, you know, one way or another, see if they can get, you know, buy the other property or whatever else and get another access in. Just makes more sense. So I'm not opposed to them, you know, building them, but, you know, it doesn't, it's going to look like a can of sardines out there with 163, you know? So, you know, if they could limit it down a little bit, it would be fine, too. But, you know, that's just my, you know, opinion anyway on that, to make sure that they have, you know, limited access on everything, one north or south, you know, but more than one at, when they start building.
Okay. And just so we're, just so we're clear on that, Dean, there is two. There's one coming from.
Centennial and then the emergency off of Foxborough.
And then the other one off of the other subdivision off to the side.
There is two accesses already going to be put in before you build them.
No, what?
Just one, I thought, right now in phase one.
What he is suggesting that there ought to be two accesses before phase one is.
One goes in.
And so what we're discussing is a single access for phase one with the second access being triggered by phase two.
Yeah.
So phase one is a primary street access and a secondary emergency access with phase two having the second street connection, whatever that might be.
But, you know, how long is that going to be before phase, you know, these other access roads get put in there, you know? So that is just my opinion anyway, that I think there should be two instead of one.
They're all the streets to the south with the levy and those are all cul-de-sacs, but one of the things that, that makes this additionally challenging is that all the streets to the south, except for Foxborough, are private streets.
They're private and they're too narrow anyway.
And so you can't run a public street into a private street and send subdivision traffic into a private street network. So they are limited to connecting aeroplanes to a public street, which in this case, the choices are Centennial and.
Foxborough.
And Virginia Drive.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else from the public?
Dalton McDowell, Salina. Another thing with us building all these buildings that we need to look into, fire protection. The, because with them, with all that out there, that's adding how many out there, like 75? That's 75 more buildings that are in, that are in, would be in Three's district or Station Three's main due area out there. And then I know you were adding stuff on the hill. We're going to stretch our fire department very thin. There's some, and Station Three only has a one pumper, I believe, and an engine? I'm not 100% sure, but something we need to look at before you start adding all these ones that they're wanting to add is, do we have enough fire apparatuses to cover if we have multiple fires in one town or in town?
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, any more questions for staff? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I have another question. Can we, can we pull up that future road extension again? I share the same concern that Mr. Page brought up, that there is only one access for public going into that subdivision. Potential future extensions, do we have any kind of timing on that?
Well, the most, in terms of the nearest to beginning development, it would be this property here and here and the extension of Virginia Drive. That, that is the most, I wouldn't be surprised if that isn't built before they're even ready to do phase two. But this, this is completely uncertain and this is a little more controllable. It just doesn't give you much, because it's, it's all providing two ways in mostly to the west side.
I saw the applicant and his representative shaking their heads on terms of a timeline. Could we hear from you guys on the timeline for possibly a second phase?
Good afternoon. My name is Derek Lee with Building Kansas LLC. Our intention is to build phase one within three years and to, and we have the contractors lined up to accommodate that. So barring something really extraordinary as an economic event that would impact Salina, Kansas, we don't foresee not being to phase two and having that in the planning stages within two years and would have a plat to you within three years of beginning on phase one. So yes, we do agree that before we go to phase two, and we are agreeable with city staff, planning staff, on having a mechanism in place that says phase two conditional on a secondary entrance and are very happy to do so. Does that, that answer your question?
Are you concerned about one entrance with contractors being in there and still trying to have phase one occupants in there? I'm not talking about for fire safety. I understand we cover the bases on that. I'm talking about for the public.
We are not, the traffic study that was initially done was for the amount of lots that were there. It did not take the duplex component into effect, and that's why there's a revised study that everyone will review before we're back on the 15th. But with that amount, which is more than what would exist, even townhome-wise in phase one, the traffic study showed that Centennial is more than adequate for handling that traffic. So the traffic study, and that was one of our concerns early on, you know, that we saw as a potential roadblock, but we're very happy when the results came back and said for 160, I think it was 168 was the number, that that was okay. Now we need to, of course, see that doubled. But again, before that would, before we would look at 168 lots with two townhomes each, there would be a secondary entrance before any construction could begin.
And I'm Lance Cochran. I'm with Building Kansas as well, and I think you also need to realize, we can't build a second street, because there will be no streets over on phase two until we get to phase two. I mean, so it's a, there's, there's not a real feasible way to do it. I mean, we've talked to city staff, doing the one on the west, up on the north, it's not really feasible, that they're not comfortable with that. They want the access back to the east. And so I think that's the, so until we get to phase two, we really can't do the secondary access.
And one of the revisions on our plat is that that first street, it'll be Tim Rogers Lane on the west there. Instead of that ending in a cul-de-sac or connecting, it will be a through street so that if we do need to connect at the northwest point, we can do that. So we will have three options when the time comes. We know that there's a development south of Menards there that would be east of the connector street that is Virginia Drive. That would be our intention as well, is that somebody can come in from Magnolia, from a major connector street and be able to access the neighborhood as well as from Centennial. I think it's, it's better flow for the neighborhood. It's a more sellable product, at the end of the day.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Any other questions while I'm up here?
No, I think the big issue that, I mean, at least for the stuff that I've had to set through is when it's a phase one and a phase two, and then you have an emergency access, and then when does the second connection street come into effect? And then how's that lined out? I think that's where people start having some issues and concerns and just making sure that everybody's on the same page. But again, you're going to have two access points into phase one with emergency access. It's not a full-time road. It's just going to be used just for emergency access if it's needed. And in most situations, as Mr. Long said, you're never needing it, but it's there and there's currently housing developments in Salina that are set up that way, that they have one main entrance and then they have an emergency access and they're permanent situation for them, so.
Yeah. And to speak to the levy on the north side of it, where it goes into the field, we've set aside 110 feet beyond the levy for us to put that grading and that compacted surface in. And at a 10-1 pitch, even at five feet, that'll take 50 feet to get to, and we've got 110 to play with there.
Okay.
So we should have more than enough space. And the engineers have already been out and given us an estimate as part of our early infrastructure bids to accomplish that and have been able to come back with a bid and get to that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Okay, now I'll bring it back up to the commission for some action.
Yeah, our, our main suggestion or request is that if you postpone it, that whoever's making the motion include the, the date of that future meeting date and the time so that anyone who's watching at home or wanting to keep track knows exactly when that date is.
So Dean, we can choose between March 15th and April 5th?
Yeah, well, we leave those options in because we generally want to hear from the applicant and from other staff about how, what is the most realistic date. When we wrote our staff report and sent it out last week, we had not met with the applicant and their design team, which we did yesterday. And based on our progress update that we had yesterday, staff feels pretty comfortable that we can have a full staff report and all the, the traffic study and all the attachments for you on March the 15th. So we're comfortable with that date.
And that would have been my question. Staff and applicant are all, both comfortable with that date?
We feel like we're on the same page with them based on our meetings.
You want to do it, Carl?
Yes. I recommend we postpone consideration of application number P 22-1 until our March 15th meeting.
I'll second that.
No, go ahead.
Is that what we're, Gary, you problem? Okay. Okay.
Would you mind putting the time in that motion, too, please?
4:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, that carries eight zero. Thank you. Okay, we'll drop down to 3.2.
Thank you. We've got a rather lengthy report that is attached to this, but under the State Planning, Zoning, and Enabling Act, it calls for the City Planning Commission to annually review the comprehensive plan. So when you have new members, they can be brought up to speed on, on some of the maps associated with it and the policies. The other thing that happens over time is you start out with a comprehensive plan and a, a future land use map. And what we've summarized for you on page two and three, and carrying all the way over to four and five, is that those, those summarize different actions taken by the planning commission that modified the original plan, either in reaction to changing conditions or to have something, in some cases, to have the maps where they're produced in-house by staff so that we can adjust and modify them and not just have static maps that are in a, a plan document. So some of the examples was that the city has adopted a, a street classification map and that, that's important for, for funding, for future extensions, for KDOT funds, to have a major street plan that, that tells everybody whether Holmes Road is a collector's street or an arterial street or West Magnolia or streets like that. We've also, the planning commission recommended adoption of a bicycle master plan and trails master plan. And so those are, are things, and those have been updated over time. And then most of the other items that we're, we're summarizing there have to do with, with changing future land uses. So for example, the former Lowell School was shown as public, semi-public land use and based on that being a school site, and the planning commission recommended that that be changed to future residential to reflect the change in the use to an apartment building. And so there, there have been a few changes around the Kansas Wesleyan campus. The most recent one that the planning commission looked at was extending the South Ninth Corridor overlay along the west side of South Ninth for the Aggr Center project, and then that project was withdrawn and didn't move forward. The other aspect of this is the comprehensive plan has, you know, chapter or chapters about implementation of the plan. And so the, that, that includes items where we have tried to address for the commission. The plan recommended this. This is what planning staff has done or proposes to do in response. A lot of those things have been addressed already. And so I thought one of the things that we might do, and I don't know the order that you have these in, Dustin, what, what is the first map that you have?
Well, the first one I have is the bicycle master plan that we can, we can walk through. And this is our most recent update with the trails. So what our Public Works Department does, and Mr. Stack, our city engineer, is here to speak to it, is they, as part of their annual improvements that they do, they keep extending the plan, meaning they, they work on bike routes that have not been completed but are planned to be completed, and they continue to grow the connectivity or increase the connectivity. And so on the legend in the top right here, you can see what is planned, what is completed, what requires infrastructure. And by that, we mean significant improvements that aren't, that aren't really simple to fix. And there's two types of, well, there's multiple types of bike routes. There's sharrows, there's bike lanes, and then there's also hike bike trails, and then there's the levy trail. And the levy trail is, is the trail system that's, that goes around the city on, on the top of the levy. But I'll let Mr. Stack speak to the plan a little bit more.
Thank you, Dustin. Yeah, the, he did a good job explaining it. The other thing we have, the 10-foot sidewalks are kind of the new, the newer thing you're seeing more of. We've been able to complete one out on, Dustin, you want to pull the map up a little ways? There's Markley out here, so we need to update that. That's the latest and greatest 10-foot trail that we've been able to add. It was aggregate not too long ago and now has those developments have happened. Wheatland Valley, as well as Magnolia Hills Estates there, we're able to concrete that. Of course, it ends, ends there at the very south end. I was like, where do you go? Well, it's the end. It'll, it'll eventually connect to something, but right now it will just end. So it's, but you have to keep building them to connect them, because there was a time where we didn't build them anywhere, and so now they're not there. And now we can't connect them anything, because they weren't there to begin with. So anyway, that's the excitement about some of these trails. The other one that's in the works is Magnolia, right off, right through here. Dustin, you want to pull it up a little bit further? Thank you. Hope that says that. Make sure it says it on here. Yeah, it's yellow. From Ohio to about Central Mall, Highland Avenue, this section right through here, we got some, we received some KDOT transportation alternative funding, which is kind of a real push for DOTs and the federal government to try to push alternative transportation. So it's, a lot of that is trails or transit or other things besides just streets. So they're funding that at a pretty high level, and we got quite about $400,000 for that section right through there. So it'll be a new 10-foot trail along South High School, Jerry Ivy there, kind of connecting over to the Highland, which is a... Thought it was shown. Hopefully, it's not really shown. It's going to become a kind of a bike, kind of a bike, a backwards area bike lane, because we don't have a good connection from the mall. And I guess, we have the lanes on Ninth Street, so we do have a good 10-foot trail on Ninth Street. We were having trouble getting it from Highland and Ninth Street, but we're going to look into that. But at least we're going to have a 10-foot trail quite a ways through there to connect that area. Kind of like Centennial Road out here, we have a 10-foot trail, and we're going, we have some KDOT money to extend that road to the south, along Vortex and Superior, not Superior, with the old El Dorado area out there, Superior.
So Centennial will be improved all the way down to Waterwell Road?
Correct. And along with that improvement, we'll have a 10-foot trail down to Waterwell. So starting to kind of connect the outskirts, and eventually those will connect to something someday, you know, as the city grows. But they're nice trails, and our hope is, of course, that we can continue that to the north, to K-State and West Magnolia, kind of that donut hole area there where we really don't have any sidewalks or trails yet. But we do have a lot of interest in that area. The aeroplanes development definitely helps that, the Driever development there around Menards, and so hopefully we're on the horizon for getting some funds for that as well. Seems like there are some funds out there that we're going to keep applying for.
Funds that we're applying for for West Magnolia, would that include hike bike element as well?
Correct, yeah, that's for sure. That's a real area of concern, getting a 10-foot trail, a five-foot sidewalk, or at least a road wide enough to ride a bike on, because right now it's pretty narrow. So it's a tough area to even ride. Trying to think if there's anything else this year on some of our micro-surfacing projects. So we continue every year to just update this map. It's kind of our master plan. So as we do maintenance to a road, and this, for example, this one's going to be Red Hawk, so if I can find Red Hawk. Where is Red Hawk? It's over there. Excuse me. Is it still there, Dustin?
Yes.
Okay, sometimes it just goes away. Red Hawk north of Magnolia is one that we're actually micro-surfacing this year, and it's kind of a collector in that area, and it'll have a bike share on it, I believe. It'll have, it'll connect on our bike master plan. So as we do maintenance, mill and overlays, micro-surfacings, any of the work we do on the streets, we try to, if it's on the bike route, then we add the bike lanes at that time. So there are a few that we don't get to real often. Some of our concrete roads are in pretty good shape. We don't have to maintain them a whole lot, so we have to specifically go in there and do those. And so each year, too, we have a pavement marketing contract that we try to get a few more each year, and this is about the almost seventh year of this program, so we're getting pretty close to getting them all done, the ones that we can do, that don't have some other issues that we, that are hard to overcome. So I'll stand for other questions.
Could you give us a quick update on the first phase of the Riverside Trail, starting at South Ohio to the Y? Has work begun on that?
It's a good question. That is, when I failed to mention, it's west of Ohio. Does that show up on this map? It does. It's yellow. That's part of the River Master Plan, and we did receive some funds for that from KDOT a few years ago, and so we were able to get it designed and laid out pretty far along. However, during COVID, that was funds we had to give up at that time. So it had a lot of challenging things that were going to be tough in that area anyway. But since that time, since we had 90% design plans, and we'd talked to the property owners about right-of-way and try to how that was going to fit in back there behind their properties along Elmhurst, since that time, we've been approached by the Friends of the River, and they've raised some money for it. So between them and the YMCA, being able to do that project. So we've started trying to acquire the right-of-way for that, working on that now, actually. It's kind of a slow process, but we're getting there.
Dustin, did we lose that?
Okay. Mr. Commissioner Gilmore, can you hear us? Are we, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
You just...
Just can't see the shared file.
Okay, well, it's looking like I may need to restart Zoom here is my concern, and so I'm not sure if we want to do that, or if we want to just keep rolling with what we have, or what people's opinions are.
In my opinion, we can keep rolling. I do have the packet right here, so.
Yeah, is that, it's hopefully in the packet. That's the one.
Yes.
Elmhurst, west of Ohio, you can kind of see it there, north of Crawford. So that's the area that we're working on now, and in the section all the way to the Kenwood Cove. So basically, it goes along Elmhurst Drive, and then along the river, back around behind the Y to the west of the Y, and then wraps around back to the north, following the river there, and it would end at about Kenwood Cove. So that is in the works on design, as well as right-of-way acquisition, as well as some construction. We've actually cleared some trees out of that area so far, and we're going to continue to do that as we get property and get it laid out. It's interesting when you get in there, and it's open right now. It's, you know, less vegetated, so you can kind of see kind of a better idea where things are, and you decide that maybe you don't want to take out that 60-inch cottonwood tree, so then you decide we maybe want to go around that. So our city forester has been helping us through some of those things as well, because you want it to be a kind of a tree-lined trail, so you don't want to remove all the good trees, and some of the trees were, couldn't really tell where they were before. So we're starting to be able to lay out a pretty good trail on there. It's kind of exciting. Most of the property owners are very on board with it, pretty excited about it, so it's a good thing.
Dan, is there any concern or any plans to do anything about the erosion of the bank over there north of Indian Rock, that little part that goes behind Wilson?
Yeah, that's, there's a trail back there along, yeah, kind of between Wilson and Company, the Board of Trade Building and the river. The, we did have to do some work along Gypsum, at the corner of Gypsum and Indiana, it's Indy, not Indiana. It's not Indiana, it's Gypsum and...
I think it's Iowa.
Iowa, yep, Gypsum and Iowa, right at the corner there. Those were concerns for, of course, us, as well as the Corps of Engineers, and we were able to get some funds to fix that area. So that area is really, you'll see that area, it's rocked, and it's really, there's pilings driven in there, so it's really armored really well. So that area is not going to go anywhere anymore, and that was a concern, that we'd lose a street or something. So at this point, we don't have any plans to fix it any further to the north. It's, the Corps has just kind of said it's going to, the river's going to do what it's going to do, and we'll have to just work around it now. If it starts impacting, you know, private property or getting, you know, if it's, that's a really sandy area, so it's, if you look at 1960 pictures of that area, it was a nice, they cut a nice, nice channel through there with nice slopes. You could walk down them and it didn't take long where that sand just gone. So a lot of that area is like that, but it's kind of equalized to a certain extent. When we have a flood, we'll have a cave-in like that. We had one kind of right to the north of that hard armored area, which is what happens when you armor something. It's going to transfer that somewhere else. The river wants to move, and if you keep it from moving here, it's going to move somewhere else down the road. So that's kind of what it's done there a little bit, but so far it hasn't gotten any worse, and we've, we may have to permanently fence that area. It's kind of what we're thinking, because right now it's just kind of orange fence, but we'll continue to watch it.
Is all this still dependent on the Corps of Engineer money that would...
Most of the Corps of Engineer money is for, at this point, that they're $10 million that they're allocated for the river channel work in town more, not in that section. So that section is more of the, kind of our flood control, our flood control levy. That's a different pot of money. So if, you know, we have another flood and we have a cave-in again, then we can get money for that, but right now they've said that one's not bad enough to worry about, basically is what they've told us. So we'll keep an eye on it. Got a couple, it kind of happens in there periodically.
One quick question for you. I think you were referencing it earlier. The trail, if you start at the Y, see, and go south, and then it's still a nice old trail, wooded area, and then you come out, see, south of the soccer fields?
Mm-hmm.
And it's just that big vacant open area now. What's the plan for that area? Or are you just, we're just clearing trees out?
We've cleared trees out, and there'll be a 10-foot trail in there, 10-foot concrete trail is what's going to go in there.
Okay. Where's that trail start and stop that goes through there?
Well, that's the...
Is that the one?
Oh, good, he's got to back up. Here we go. Right here, talking about that area right around in here, the Y's right there.
Correct.
We've cleared out trees along this area. That's actually a city park in there. It's kind of an interesting...
Yeah.
Platted thing. It's Riverside Park. It's pretty big, yeah. It's quite, we got almost 1,000 feet of park in there. That's not the YMCA. YMCA's kind of been maintaining it or dealing with it forever, right by the soccer fields. But we've cleared that out. That's what we had permission to do so far. We're going to continue to clear out all the way around, and then all the way from here back over to Ohio. And then it'll have a 10-foot concrete hike and bike trail. It'll have culverts under it and curves that are to KDOT design standards. So it'll be a little, actually a little bit better than some of our other trails, just because it was designed already with KDOT design standards.
Gotcha. Cool.
So that's what Dean was really asking. That's the area we were kind of talking about, trying to get built this year, and we'll continue to clear some trees, and does seem like that's a wide area of clearing trees for a 10-foot trail, but that's kind of what they had us do. It's about a 30-foot swath through there, 10-foot on each side, so we can get the drainage in and get the, really, the trees grow up pretty fast in that area voluntarily, so we thought we could get them cleared out good and get it maintained pretty well, as well as leave the big trees, and then we'll have to maintain it in the future to keep them from growing back up over our trail.
So long-term from Ohio to the Y is all going to be paved?
Yes, that will be paved, correct.
And all that other yellow is future, potential future phases of the River Master Plan?
Yeah, from here over is aggregate trail, so it's kind of a possibility to be paved a little easier. Once they're aggregated or laid out, it's a lot easier to pave them, so it's, that's an area that could get paved sooner, but the rest of these will be tough. It's going to take tree clearing and retaining walls, and some of those will be tougher, and they'll probably be done more with the river project and the Corps of Engineers if that ever, or when it comes through. It's slated to come through, but it's just taking a while.
Is that a lot of that yellow, is that from the $50,000 a year that the city puts aside for the hike and bike trails for the, that is allocated every year?
What Mr. Stack's talking about has been more to do, the $50,000 is more for the levee trail.
Yeah, around in this area.
Around the flood control levy around the city.
Mm-hmm.
This river, as Mr. Stack said, this trail here is going to be really tied in as channel sections are improved, the trail will probably go in at the time that the channel section is improved, so it's definitely going to be phased.
Yeah, the trails are hard to lay out in some of those areas, so they'd be probably laid out more with the river project, kind of more in conjunction with that. However, the river project's expensive, and they don't have a lot of money in there for trails. So you may be right. That $50,000 may end up going for a trail here or a trail there as we go here. It's, we're trying to, each year, do a trail, and it seems like as you do more and more of them, you start, we've really covered quite a bit of our aggregate trail on our levee, so we're not, say, we're running out of places to do trails, but we are starting to look at other spots to pave. And Markley was a nice one, just kind of in conjunction with the development. We were able to use that $50,000 to make that money go far for that section.
We had received historically a lot of comments, and planning commissioners may have too, residents from Magnolia Hills Estates who didn't feel like they could safely get out of their neighborhood and go up to the Berkeley Family Recreation Area or the dog park or whatever, because even people who are experienced bicyclists didn't really feel safe on Markley Road. So having the trail there both for pedestrians or people pulling wagons or bicyclists or whatever, have an alternative to not have to be in Markley Road was the idea there.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Dean.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah.
So it's a good thing we have the screen, because I couldn't help but notice that the color copier failed on, failed on us, as you looked in your packet, and you have all these wonderful maps that you can't read because they're all in black and white. So that is a big fail from the copier that reproduced these maps, but Mr. Hirsch has all of those in place, and I just, if, I don't know if you have the urban service area map, Dustin, I would just kind of walk through what the... So this is what it's supposed to look like in your packet, and what this is supposed to represent is the long, long-term, 50-year growth horizon for the city and what the general land use pattern is. So you see mostly purple and industrial or employment uses around the airport to the east and southeast is where you're seeing these areas, and then these edges are like the growth boundary for the city. The other thing that's unique about this is, for whatever reason, when the county did their plan, they chose not to adopt a land use plan, and they just adopted the city's plan. So in these, in these areas, these fringe areas here, the county's plan is consistent with our plan, which shows the primary extension areas for residential. And then Mr. Bernhardt had mentioned floodplain and floodplain areas, and this, this green band here is floodplain and floodway, and it's very likely that, unlikely that any kind of development will incur in those areas. And you've got the airport here, so that kind of pushes the residential expansion to this direction there. We also have a future land use map that's more specific, Dustin. I think we have that with the, with the land use classifications, and that most of the time when we're talking about areas and with the red being commercial and the yellow being the low-density residential, so we're always going to tie our reports back to the plan. I do believe we have a blow-up for the West Magnolia Corridor, Dustin. Because the Marietta family owned the majority of this property out in this donut hole area, and they recently sold it all at auction, the Planning Commission is going to be faced with some land use decisions and future development decisions. This is, this is what the area shows right now, with this being Menards and Commercial on this side, down here where the aeroplanes is, and on this side is showing us future suburban residential. And then this side over here, the reason it's conservation area, even though there's some floodplain here, it's very shallow floodplain, but up here, there's actually some floodway, and we have areas where the ground elevation is four or five feet below the flood elevation, whereas down here, you're talking about ground elevations that might be 12 inches or 18 inches below the flood elevation. So the plan does not anticipate that the north side of Magnolia is really developable, but it does anticipate that at some point that will develop. But part of your role upcoming this year, as we start to get development proposals for these areas, is to see what the vision is land use-wise for that area. And then I think we had another map for South Ohio, just showing what's happening out there, Dustin. But this is the Ryan Edition here, which is, if you've been out there, you can see work being done to put in streets and utilities and things and that, and that's a rural housing incentive district, and rural housing incentive districts has, their incentives provided, but they have fairly short timeframes for getting the housing built and developed. And so even though you can't tell, we've already issued 25 building permits out in that area, but a lot of our contractors are having trouble... But a lot of our contractors are having trouble getting water line pipe and sewer pipe to actually put in the ground. So that's, that's delaying some of the things. You have the Stone Lake area, which continues to develop. This area here was the Lakeview Estates that Mr. Byquist submitted with Cedarhurst going, proposed to be going up in that area. And so they're pretty close to getting their benefit district form to get their water, sewer, and streets in so that you can start developing there. But that kind of just gives you a picture of the, the South Ohio corridor. And then we did have maps in there dealing with transportation that are unfortunately in all black and white. But this, I was referring to the street classification map. This is just important. There's a number of things in our development code. It has different rules, right-of-way widths and things for arterial streets or collector streets. So having those defined is important. And then this is important for KDOT when they look at things for funding decisions. If something is classified as a local street, they're not going to be funding it. But if we can show that it's an arterial street on a plan, people that are doing traffic steadies or whatever, obviously, we want, we want our largest traffic volumes in arterial streets. And then collector streets are streets that are expected to collect traffic from multiple subdivisions. And so one would expect higher traffic on a collector street than, than on a, just a residential street. But like we have Sykes Drive, we have Fairdale, we have, or actually Merrymount, and Merrymount down to Cedar Ridge, Markley, those would be considered collector-type streets. And then Magnolia out to the K-State Slant of Campus is a future arterial. And because that's an arterial, we have a better chance of getting grant funding to assist with that. So we apologize for the wonderful black and white maps, but.
Dean, is there any chance of us getting a copy of those next, at the next meeting? So I'd like to have a copy of those for my notebook, at least we.
Yeah.
Because those come in pretty handy to look in, you know, when somebody mentions, you know, about what different arterial streets and stuff like that is. I think that'd be really handy to have.
We can get you a supplement your next meeting where the maps are actually, you can read them.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I was, can't tell you how disappointed it was when I opened my packet here and said, wow. We color-code everything and nothing is, as Mr. Stack was referring to, those yellow lines on the map, and you can't see them. So we can, we can provide you with a map packet that has all those in color. But main purpose for sharing today is just kind of give you an update of what's happening, what will be happening, and then to make sure that as we get new commissioners all, that you have access to all these maps that do go, future trails, those kind of things. So when you have friends or neighbors that hit you up about what's happening here or here, that you can have access to that information. So it's not, it's not really an action item, but if there's, other than having colored maps, if there's anything else that any commission members would like additional information about or to supplement, now be the chance to let us know. But we did want to get Mr. Stack here to kind of update you on what's happening with the trails. Because every year, the CIP comes in, you review it. Every year, it has $50,000 in there for hike and bike trail stuff. We thought maybe we should let you know what we're doing with it, so.
Okay.
So staff would be open to any questions you have about things moving forward. But we, we do think there's going to be additional development that's going to be looked at around the Menards area and out in that area, which is not, it's not ready. There's no applications filed or anything, but that is going to be an area of focus. And getting West Magnolia improved would be really important for that area. So I think that is all we would have. We don't have anybody on to comment about the comp plan?
Correct. We have no one from the public on Zoom, and it doesn't appear we have anyone from the public in the live meeting either.
Okay. So we've made a note to make sure we get color maps to all the commissioners, so we don't have any legislative matters. So no administrative items and no preliminary discussion items. So in terms of unfinished or other business, as you noted in your motion, obviously, we will have a meeting on the 15th. We recognize that that's spring break for some people, and we've, we've avoided that sometimes. But because of the number of applications that we have, we're going to meet on the 15th, and we'll have this item. If you're familiar with the vacant area that's north of Long MacArthur Ford, for those of you who have been around a long time, you can remember when that was exit ramps coming off of the interstate to go north on Ninth Street. And as a result of those exit ramps, you have a configuration there at Long MacArthur Ford, where you, you have this, this weird, this is a wedge and this is a wedge. Well, they're, they've, they've got that all under ownership and control now, so they're going to go in there and wipe out this line and come in with a replat that squares all this off and create actual rectangular lots instead of what you see there. And then they have a plan to construct a quick lane auto service business directly north of, of Long MacArthur Ford. There's a electronic billboard here, and then Evergy went in and condemned an 80-foot easement up here and ran transmission lines through there, which impact the property. But the plans for that property will be on your agenda. And then on the south side of West Cloud, just west of Broadway, there's a vacant parcel there, and there's a proposal to build multifamily apartments there. And that's currently zoned for manufactured home park, and so they have a rezoning request. Those will all be on your agenda for the 15th.
Okay. No unfinished or other business there, have that public forum? And they, like I said, we don't have anybody online, or we don't have anybody in the audience?
Correct.
Yeah. And so we have, we've got the chair and vice chair to get all caught up on minutes, but I do have some plats here that we got the mayor to sign last night. I need Chair Hay to sign before he leaves. But other than that, we have no reason not to adjourn.
Have we introduced our new member, Mr. Farber?
Oh, I wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to meet Mr. Chad Farber, who was appointed by the mayor to serve on the planning commission. And this is his first meeting, and we promised we'll have a nameplate for him at the next meeting, so.
Welcome. Okay, other than that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 See you guys on the 15th.